Yeah, could we start with a sound check?
Sound check, I agree with 12.
Earls, 11.
Shan, 10.
Vogel, 9, number 9.
Tantar, 8.
He gets old.
Clerk number 6.
Zee, number 5.
Sorry, Junta, number 3, I was taking the super one.
Devlin, number 2.
Khan, number 1.
And on the phone, we have Councilor O'Brien. You there?
Yes. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to recognize two now former residents of the city who deserve to be acknowledged for their contributions to our community. Linda, I'm sorry, Linda May Lucas, who is very active in PTL and a personal friend of some members of the council, who was inspirational to many other parents who worked so hard on behalf of our children in public schools. And Helen Shapiro, a retired high school teacher. I'm told by the clerk, you should have had her. You did. But just a moment aside, we'll call those two in the daybreak, please. Thank you. Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Back to, before we go any further, to point out to the members that we have Councilor O'Brien on the phone, so he's going to be participating remotely tonight.
Counselor Tantar.
Present.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zee.
Present.
Counselor Devlin.
Here.
Counselor Earls.
Present.
Counselor Aigman.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Khan.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counsel President O'Connell.
Present.
Excuse me.
There's a late file item.
Well, there's one official late file. It's appointment number 33. It's the appointment of Jennifer Blanchett to become the zoning administrator. The councils will also see on their desks, there are two resumes for the two reappointments that went to planning and development, Greg Ogden and Ted Walden. Ted Walden, thank you.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the late file items.
Second. Second.
All those in favor who want to do this in a roll call?
All those in favor for waiving the rules, Counselor Tantar. Yes. Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes, y'all.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counsel President Connell.
Yes. One more motion, Mr. President. Motion to waive the rules to allow items to be taken out of committee by roll call vote instead of by voice vote due to telephone.
To save just a little time, last time we had a remote participant, so as we can say as we conducted our solace of the last meeting.
Should we get a second?
Any questions about that? I guess you better go on a roll call. All those in favor of roll call?
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Was there a second?
Yes, I said.
Sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, and just at the risk of repetition, it's to waive the rule for a roll call on removing an item from committee.
Correct. Thank you.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
One question for the meeting at board. I had to point out to people, because I had two or three in the last couple of days, that people wanted to get on the agenda and speak. It was past the agenda filing deadline, and I advise them to get on the agenda. They have to submit a letter, order, ordinance, something that is on our agenda that will form a file for a couple of time. I'm sure that all do know that, but this is for general consumption. If you want to get on your agenda, you have to submit something to the clerk's office to the council. First speaker tonight is Glee Woodworth of 51 Prospect Street.
Hi, I'm Glee Woodworth, 51 Prospect Street. In tonight's consent agenda, you have a packet on the Essex Heritage Scenic Byway Kiosk Project. This is sponsored by the Essex National Heritage Commission. They will be paying in full for the entire design, installation, and maintenance. The coastal byway goes through 90 miles through Essex County, and each community, there's 14 communities, will have this kiosk. And it's all about promoting all of the communities, including Newburyport. I am coordinating the Newburyport's kiosk. So we'll have a series of maps, a local map, map of Essex County, and then photographs of Newburyport, promoting restaurants, dining, Custom House, Museum of Old Newbury, Plum Island, and so forth. And so I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Patricia Daniels.
Patricia Daniels, 234 Love Street, Newburyport. I am concerned about the cost of parking. I walk a lot and speak to a lot of the youth that work in some of the shops, and I think the cost for employees of parking is high, particularly when they have to be, work on time, and they can't find a spot. So I don't know what the answer is, but I hope that you will consider that.
Thank you.
Laura Algrove.
Laura Algrove, 22 Beacon Ave. I'm also asking you to consider the possible ramifications of this parking. My main concern is the extending the hours from 6:00 to 8:00. I have talked to people who work in restaurants, especially one young lady in particular, who's a bartender at one of the establishments, and she said to me that extending the hours from 6:00 to 8:00 would have a negative impact, because 6:00 is their main dinner hour, it's their main rush. It would affect the patrons, and it would also affect the waitstaff and the cooks who work there, because if they have to run out and move their vehicles, that's going to be a total disruption. And they're concerned that they're, they are going to lose business. I know the restaurants are a lot of part of the downtown income, and I feel that this could negatively affect it and effectively, you know, fight the hand that feeds you, as the old saying goes. So I really hope you take this into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Connell, members of the City Council. Quick update on where we are with the budget. The school committee held their required hearing on the school budget on April 2nd. The proposed FYI budget for the schools is $33.1 million, has a shortfall of $173,000 and change, and that was to include some new positions requested by the leadership team. The loss of revenues is a significant concern to the schools, but the school committee decided to open up school choice again, because that was where we lost a tremendous amount of revenue, having shut down school choice to grades around 6 and 9, and that allocates $5,000 per student. The schools are also actively exploring the work with two international firms, and that would bring in international students at full tuition at $18,000. On the city budget, we, I've mentioned this several times about MS4, the federal government EPA stormwater mandate, which has been pushed out and pushed out, and now it is officially kicking in July 1. And to minimally meet those standards, we need to establish a new stormwater department and utility. We have been working on the first three of these permits, and now we have to move forward with the MS4 permit. We've identified $190,000 that it would require for us to advance the stormwater department. I've been meeting with the PEC group on our health insurance, and MIA presented us with an increase of 6.5%, which would be an increase of almost a half a million dollars to our annual premium of $9.1 million for HMOs, that serves approximately 453 subscribers, and 2.9 for the PPO, which is for about 121 subscribers. The average municipal increase was around 4.6% this year across the state, and we're hoping that we can get the PEC group to get our number down closer to that average. Fats, oil, and grease, we've talked about this a while ago, but these were regulations that were passed by the Board of Health, and this is an absolutely significant ordinance or order that was passed by the Board of Health regarding the amount of fats, oils, and greases that are getting into our sewer lines. You can see a picture there. That is a pipe that is almost completely blocked because of fats. So there was a mandatory training a year ago with all of the restaurants, and worked with them about these regulations, and provided an overview of why this isn't so important, about having the grease traps cleaned once a month, and the inspections that will occur. There is a, we're still not doing really well in terms of getting compliance across the board. We've created a new app on, which is in real time, identifies compliance across all restaurants, as well as when inspections occur. There is a mandatory training that will be occurring at the end of this month, and each of the restaurants will be receiving their report cards. And then following that, fines will begin being instituted. This is critical for saving our infrastructure and preventing costs for having to chop this fat that solidifies in our pipes and damages our infrastructure. Paid parking, we're now entering our eighth year of paid parking in the city, and John Burke, who presented a comprehensive report on the status of our paid parking, and that report can be found on the website that's included in my update. The initial proposal that we presented when we introduced paid parking seven years ago was for $50 for resident permits and $5 for seniors. The council opted, since it was a new rollout, to do $5 per year for resident stickers, and then free for seniors. Consequently, what's happened is we have more than 9,000 parking stickers out there, and we don't have a lot of room in the lots for people who are visiting our city, going to our restaurants, businesses, and that's the revenue we really need to be able to continue the upgrades to downtown, as well as cover the bonding for the garage. The pro forma regarding, I think if anyone has questions about how we're looking at the finances of paid parking, there is a pro forma that has been posted on the finance department's website. I would encourage everyone to go there and read that. I know that there's going to be a lot more discussion and work regarding paid parking. In schools, we anticipate our final negotiations this week with our prospective superintendent, Sean Gallagher. Also, last week I had the opportunity, I know many of you have already had the chance to tour the science lab, I toured them with the existing principal, my parent, our incoming principal, Andrew Wolfe, as well as our facilities director, Steve Burcom, and it was agreed that we need to establish an ad hoc committee that would work collaboratively and identify how we can begin to move forward to upgrade our labs. The Newburyport redevelopment authority, as you know, we've all worked in various capacities over many years to get to this juncture where we are with dissolving the NRA and transferring their property, most of it to go to, or all of it to the waterfront trust. We had a little hiccup that occurred at the last NRA meeting where they conveyed property to the Custom House Maritime Museum, which according to state regulations and in consultation with legal, they cannot in isolation convey property. It has to be done in a full plan that has the agreement of the City Council and the mayor. So we have some work to do to get back on track with that. In your packet tonight, you see an order that has been introduced to initiate a home rule petition that would go to the legislature, that would actually formally dissolve the NRA. And so we have a lot of discussion to do as we move this process forward. Plum Island, just a quick update there, as you know, they, particularly the area by Reservation Terrace took a tremendous hit during the storms that occurred over the last two months, and the residents have come together and raised $25,000. And during survey of the accreted sand on the edge of Plum Island, it looks like we'll be able to place about 1,500 cubic yards of sand to make a new berm along Reservation Terrace. We're working with the state on getting a piping clever monitor. Hopefully that person was trained today, that's a requirement if you start doing this kind of work on the beaches after the 1st of April or March 31st. And I also wanted to extend my thanks to everyone who came out to Plum Island to help clean up this area for the placement of sand. There is a picture there I thought you would find interesting, which shows the erosion that occurred on Plum Island. The red line that you see in your picture is where the current beach line is. You can see the extent of the erosion over the years. I had mentioned that we would be meeting with Mass Housing Partnerships. We did have that meeting, it was very informative. We have submitted a grant for technical support to MHP to help us with the adaptive reuse of the brand school, and we anticipate a six to eight week turnaround. We are very hopeful that we'll get some technical support on this. I mentioned to you that the businesses in the Business Park were pretty concerned about national grid, distribution of electricity, loss of power, power outages, communication. We had a very good meeting at the end of March with, at the Business Park at Rochester, and were able to, you know, really talk about their existing system, where the issues are, short-term, long-term fixes, as well as a major issue in communication that we will continue to work on. On Friday, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission hosted a legislative caucus, and mayors and managers from across Merrimack Valley met with our legislators. We discussed everything from power outages to tree removal to budget shortages, circuit breaker, et cetera. It was a very, very productive meeting, and we hope to be having another one in six months. The municipal vulnerability grant program, the workshop that is required was held on Saturday. It was a full-day workshop with identified stakeholders. It was incredibly productive, where we began to look at those vulnerabilities in our city, like the wastewater treatment plant that have been identified, and then begin to look at action steps to be able to protect these assets in our city. I'll have additional information that will come, came out of that meeting on Saturday shortly. The D. D. Geiger Center, just wanted to recognize them. They held 35th anniversary white ribbon breakfast in Georgetown at the, a couple weeks ago, and Amesbury students were able to present the work that they're doing in anti-bullying and bystander education. It was very, very good program, and I also was very honored to be recognized as one of their 35 pillars in the community for supporting their work in domestic violence. I also met with the new chairman of Yankee Homecoming coming up, Maureen Ryan. Her theme celebrates seaport pride, and she's open to suggestions, concerns, questions. So I asked that if you have concerns about Yankee Homecoming coming up, please send me an email, and I would be happy to sit and meet with Yankee Homecoming Executive Committee and address those concerns.
Counselors, have any questions or clarification on the mayor's?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public consent agenda.
Which consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for March 26th. There's one transfer, number seven, health insurance $30,000 to legal, city solicitor, same amount, that's to go to budget and finance. There are three communications. Communication 26 is the annual audit for the city's FYI 2017 financial statements, to go to budget and finance. There's communication 27, River Valley Charter School Storm Drain Project, to go to Neighborhood and City Services. There's communication 28, which is the Essex Coastal Scenic Byway Kiosk Project, again to go to Neighborhood and City Services at the suggestion of Counselor Khan. Appointments. First appointment, appointment number 22, Ron Zimba, 58 Lime Street Unit 1 to the Historical Commission, 5-1, 2021. Paul Hogg, 4 Colton Drive, Special Police Officer, until 3-1, 2020. Following the reappointments, appointment 24, Johnny Walker, 64 A. Boardman Street, Assistant Harbor Master until 3-1, 2021. 25 Karen Popkin, 49 Boardman Street, to the Parks Commission, 5-1, 2023. Appointment 26, Catherine Harried, 100 High Street, Tree Commission as an alternate member, 5-1, 2019. Kim Cooten, to the Tree Commission as an alternate, she lives at 44 Hale Street until 5-1, 2021. Jane Niebling, 45 Temple Street, to the Tree Commission as a regular member until 6-1, 2021. Appointment number 29, Kevin Hunt, 10, 14 10th Street on the island, Veterans Agent, 4-1, 2019. Appointment 30, Barry McBride, 5 Pine Street, as the Assistant Wiring Inspector until 5-1, 2019. Following two appointments are reappointments. They are referred to the License and Permit Committee pursuant to our new rules. Appointment number 31, Greg Ogden, 6 Merrill Street, to the License Commission until 6-1, 2024. And Ted Walden, 12 Francis Drive, to the License Commission until 6-1, 2024. That, Mr. President, with the one change is the council agenda for this evening.
Motion to approve.
One moment, Counselor. Counselor Landcheck.
That would be, with all due respect, I think, taken up with the regular agenda under appointments.
Okay, thank you. Have a second. Motion to approve.
Second. Keep these sheets handy. Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Connell.
Now, we can regular agenda.
Regular agenda is as follows.
Motion to waive the rules and accept it as a late file, and then motion to receive and file simultaneously.
Second.
Both of them. Both of them. Second. And be to waive the rules and receive as a late file also. Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Connell. Appointments. The first appointment we could take up, Mr. President, is appointment, first reading of appointment number 33, which is Jennifer Blanchett as the zoning administrator until 12/31/2018.
Motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Connell. We do. We have a second reading of appointment number 20. Yvonne McQuilkin, 39 Purchase Street, to the Council on Aging until 5/31/2023.
Go approve.
Second.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Connell. Orders. First order would be, order number 20. Perhaps I should read it into the record, Mr. President?
Yes.
It's the parking fees order, amending section 13, 181 F-1, 13, 166, and 180.1 F-2. Resident annual permit for paid parking lot, $25. Senior annual permit, $5. Employee annual permit, $160, specifically mentioning $40 quarterly. Hourly fee for waterfront trust, the NRA East and West lots, and the State Street lot, and the parking garage, $1 per hour. Hourly fee for Green Street, Prince Place Lot, and Hales Court Lot, $1.50 per hour. Resident monthly pass for the garage, $60. Non-resident monthly pass for the garage, $80. Fine for non-payment, non-display or overtime violation, $25. On-street resident annual parking permit, $5. Of schedule shall be effective on or before July 1, 2018, submitted, Counselor Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
I have to say that reading John Burke's survey, if you will, in regards to the parking situation, and then reading what I've read over the daily news over the last few days in regards to $100 for resident fee, and now we're at $25 for residence fee, and first we're hearing that this is what we need for the garage, and of course, I was told specifically before I voted that there would be no resident money going into the garage, it would be self-sufficient. So I have to see how disappointed I was to read this. And then, of course, you know, we hear that, well, no, that money would go to downtown improvements. Well, currently, our system right now does very well at downtown improvements, so I'm not sure where that's coming from. And I have to be honest with you, that might actually be a little bit more concerning to me, and for the fact that I look around my own ward, and when I knock on doors in my own ward, you know, out on the west side of the city, you know, people say, what about our roads, what about our sidewalks, why is the focus always on downtown? And so when I hear another $20 per car from my ward for more downtown improvements, it certainly bothers me. And, you know, and then the last article I read on, in the news, seemed like the mayor had herself firmly on both sides of the line, where we need money for the garage, and we need money for downtown improvement. And I just have to say, I'm very frustrated with all this, because we had the numbers going into it, and now this seems to be different. And I know there's a debate that's going to happen, but I just didn't want to let this go by quietly. I'm very disappointed with this. The residents pay for almost everything in the city, and they should be able to park in their own downtown for just the cost of the sticker and no more.
Additional comments? The motion was to move to budget planning.
Correct.
Is that right, Counselor?
Correct.
Yes. Take a roll call on that motion.
Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
No.
Counselor Khan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien. Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Connell. Matter goes to budget and finance. Order 21 is submitted by Counselor Tantar, and essentially extends the hours from 8:00, which presently closes at 6:00 PM, Monday through Sunday. It extends it two hours, so it would read 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday and Sunday between the hours of noon and 8:00 PM in all the lots.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second. Counselor Tantar.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Zee.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Aigman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
No.
No.
Councilor Con.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Con.
Yes.
Order twenty-one goes to budget and finance.
Order twenty-two.
Reads as follows. City of Newburyport acting by and through its city council, hereby accepts the provisions of MGL Chapter sixty-four N, Section Three, and impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by marijuana retailer operating within the city of Newburyport to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at a rate of three percent of the total sales price received by the retailer as consideration for the sale of marijuana or products. Councilor Tantar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Moved in second. If budget and finance, discussion, Councilor Z.
Oh, please, you're the sponsor. Go ahead first.
Sure, I just, I just wanted to note that, um, this enables us to tax any establishment that would get established, uh, created here in Newburyport, should that happen. Uh, it, it does not create, uh, an area, a place for them that, I understand, will be coming in later, but if we do have marijuana establishment, this allows us to tax three percent.
I spoke about this last time, and I just wanted to stand up and sort of reiterate what I was saying last time. I, I think this is one of those things where, you know, now it's becoming a reality, and I think, as the counselor mentioned, the, the locations are the stickiest part of this discussion. And, um, I, I might be so bold as to say, I can't really think of a location in Ward One that's suitable, and I think the other ward counselors are probably doing this calculation in their own head, too. So, I, I want to say publicly that I think the two things the council needs to do are, one, figure out where are the potential locations that are suitable, and, and two is, you know, if we identify some sites, seriously consider if time will allow for us to have a referendum and say, do you want retail or not? And if you do, this is where it's gonna go. And I think they have to go in that order, not just a blind referendum saying, do you want to have retail again? We don't need to have a vote again on that. But, um, I think people need to know where it's gonna go, and if they're happy or unhappy about it, now it's time for a real discussion about it. So, maybe there's no friction, uh, but I, I suspect other ward counselors are wrestling with this as well. Um, so that, that's my call for tonight, is we need to look into that, and I think there has been an ad hoc that's been meeting about it, and I would, I would love to have some kind of a written report from them, just to understand those of us that are on the fringes, trying to keep up with everything we're doing. It would be helpful to know what potential sites have been identified, if any have, and keeping in mind that this is very different discussion from the cultivation discussion, which is something that, um, is happening over here, but the nexus is where, you know, we have, you know, for example, in the business park, I think, opposition to retail, but that means that we could be making two decisions at once. So, I'm just throwing this out there. Um, I think this is a big deal, and I think everybody's flying by the seat of their pants, including the state to some extent, uh, based on some of the emails I get. So, I think to the extent that we can, we should try and ground ourselves in some, you know, some firm ideas, and say, these are the places it's gonna go, and if the voters want it, then they'll know where it's gonna go to, and possibly including, you know, in or near some neighborhoods. So, that's my two cents.
Further discussion? Counselor.
Just a second, that I've specifically asked that we identify every place in the city that would be legal, um, to, uh, sell retail marijuana, and this way here, we can kind of whittle down the list as what seems appropriate to us. I'd like to start with a full list. Um, and, uh, and if anybody's interested, Ward Five is the only ward in the city that voted against recreational marijuana.
The wisdom of Ward Five. Further discussion? Uh, we'll take a roll call on a motion to refer this matter to budget and finance.
Councilor Tantar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earl.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Yes.
Councilor Junta.
Yes.
Councilor Con.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Con.
Yes.
Order twenty-three is an order to add certain streets to the two-hour residential program, so-called section thirteen, one eighty resident parking. Uh, it is amended such that Tickham Street, instead of both sides from the way known as Brown Square to Washington Street, it is the entire street. It is further amended, um, that Washington Street would, um, now read on the noddly side, running in a westerly direction from Green Street to Market Street, and on the southerly side from Court Street to Market Street. Pleasant Street is also modified to go both sides from the property at sixty-six Pleasant Street to Market Street. And, uh, there's an addition of Market Street from Merrimack Street to Washington Street, and the addition of Court Street, and it's submitted by Counselor Jared J. Agaman.
Motion to refer to public safety.
Second.
Move in second to a public safety discussion. May I have a question? If you could, the Sun Street and Winter Street on that list?
Yeah. Winter Street is already on the list, uh, beginning at the corner of Washington Street, and proceeding southerly on Winter Street to High Street.
Discussion. The roll call?
Roll call on moving the matter to public safety. Councilor Tantar.
Yes.
Councilor Vogel.
Yes.
Councilor Z.
Yes.
Councilor Devlin.
Yes.
Councilor Earl.
Yes.
Councilor Agaman.
Yes.
Councilor Junta.
Yes.
Councilor Con.
Yes.
Councilor O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilor Shan.
Yes.
Councilor Con.
Yes.
Order twenty-four. Order twenty-four is an order relative to a special act to dissolve the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority. Uh, it's submitted jointly, Councilors Zied, Junta, Earl, and Devlin. Uh, it essentially represents the effort to submit a home rule petition to the General Court to enact a special act, uh, for the city of Newburyport in the manner described, for the purposes dissolving the Newburyport Redevelopment Authority, provided the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes unless the mayor approves amendments to the bill before enactment to the General Court, and to further authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city relative to any inquiries or changes made by the General Court.
Is there a motion? Counselor Z.
Uh, motion to refer to planning and development.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion. Counselor Vogel.
I'd like to offer an amendment that it goes to general government. I think that this is much more of a general government, as it involves other entities in the city, namely the Waterfront Trust, namely the, um, settlers, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think it's necessarily a planning and development issue. I think it's actually, you know, an administrative almost, or a, uh, legal issue, or whatever it might be. I think that the discussion needs to be done, you know, with all of the bodies, in particular the administration. That would be my suggestion. I, I'd love to see it go that way.
Are you, are you asking in addition to, Counselor, or instead of?
Instead of, actually, is what I would like to see. I mean, I, I, it, that, that seems like the proper place for it to be going to, um, general government. That's, it seems like that's where it should be.
Is that a motion, Counselor?
That would be a motion.
Second.
Is there a second? Is that an acceptable motion to the sponsor?
I'd like to have some discussion on the planning and development first, please.
Uh, let's continue. Counselor, without prejudice, we'll hold that. Would that be fair?
Sure.
I'd like to hear some other comments in the meantime. Counselor Agaman?
I can't comment on that last motion.
I'm, I'm gonna ask.
I think what happened is, we had a motion on the floor, and we had a motion, amend that motion, that was seconded, and so it's now on the floor.
All right.
So, uh, who seconded your motion, Counselor Vogel?
Earl.
Thank you. So, I would say, that amendment is now open for discussion.
May I?
Yes. Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, um, I, I got an email from the mayor suggesting it might also go to, uh, general government, too, 'cause we were, uh, talking about when we might have a hearing on this. I'd expected it would go to planning and development. I guess I, I oppose the amendment, 'cause I don't think it's an order. General government is, uh, concerned with, quote, "the supervision of city properties whose custody has not been assigned to a specific municipal department." Well, in this case, it has been assigned. It was assigned to the NRA. Um, and the following municipal departments: city clerk, nope. City solicitor, nope. Register our voters, nope. Information technology, nope. Human resources, nope. So, we could do committee of the whole, if that's what people want, if it's that momentous, and we've been trying to avoid, you know, duplicating efforts, um, but it, it's not appropriate that it goes to general government.
Other discussion. Counselor Z.
I, I just want to get this off on the right foot. Um, you know, first, generally speaking, I, I just, I think it's time that we have this discussion seriously and earnestly. We had a lot of effort get poured into the ad hoc, and that's not to mention the decades of effort that have gone in before, so I, I feel like a visitor, in a sense, and, but I, I have put in a lot of time. I know other counselors have as, as well, and, um, I, I guess if I'm being honest, I'm a little bit frustrated with, with the events of the past couple of weeks. So, the idea behind this is, is pretty simple. Yes, we're asking the state to allow us to dissolve the NRA, um, but we're essentially, you know, looking to move forward with the ad hoc, and that was something that was publicly discussed for a couple of years, brought to this floor and voted on, and now it's time to, to have the rubber meet the road. So, I think, uh, as the mayor mentioned, there is quite a bit to talk about. As far as the motions on the floor, um, I would certainly suggest, or be acceptable, to have committee of the whole, if that would help, and, um, uh, I can speak for myself personally. I've been in touch with the mayor about this, and, uh, we definitely, this is gonna have to be a, a huge collaborative effort, I think, if it's gonna move forward. So, I don't think we should get stuck in the nuances of what committee it is. If committee of the whole and planning and development would be acceptable, of course we need the administration, and I'm hopeful that also some of the members of these boards and commissions will join us as well, and we get the discussion, hopefully, on track. So, and I wouldn't say one last thing. If anybody's interested in joining as a cosponsor, I would certainly welcome it. Thank you.
Counselor Vogel.
All right, well, thank you. Facing the possibility of being booed out of the room, I stand, um, not in favor of, um, dissolving the NRA. I, I, I know that that's really outside of the box, but it, it, this to me, I, I get the, I get it. I understand that the, there's this desire to, you know, get rid of the NRA. The NRA--
Excuse me, Counselor. The, the matter at hand is the original motion to refer to general government.
Thank you.
Perhaps we can come back to the substance of this.
I'll come right back to it. So, I understand that the, 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 the idea is to get rid of the NRA, and I under, and to me, um, putting this out there and having it go to committee for discussion, I guess we'll get there, but it seems like an emotional response, and as opposed to letting the, the process continue, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I guess I'll save my comments about how I feel about the NRA when it goes to committee, but I'll, I'll vote in favor of it going somewhere for discussion, but I think that it, there's more bodies that need to be involved, and I think that that's why I was concerned about it going to the general government. You got all the players in there. You don't have just the NRA, that, that if we're going to do this, we need to get all the players in the room, and we need to get to the point where it's what is going on, and who's talking to who, because this makes it sound like the NRA is the bad guy, when I think that in reality, there's a number of, um, bodies involved that are all pushing against one another, and are pushing for themselves, et cetera, et cetera. So, there's a lot to be discussed. From my discussions over the last several weeks with the bodies involved, um, it's not just the NRA being the bad guy.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Uh, Counselor Earl.
Yeah, um, to, to echo, uh, the Counselor at Large's remarks, um, why I, I put my name on this is, is, it's not really to dissolve the NRA, honestly. It's to get everyone in the same room at the same time. And whatever committee it goes to, I want to discuss, to talk about committees right now, whatever committee it goes to, it should be the whole, because I have a lot to say about it, and I'm on neither committee. Um, so if it goes one way, it should be the whole. And the first meeting should be about, how are we gonna get everybody in the room? The settlers, the waterfront trustee, NRA, the administration, in the same room at the same time with every city council, who cares? That should be the first meeting, to happen as soon as possible. Then an invitation goes out to each of those groups, their attorneys, whoever they want to bring, so that I can see everyone at the same time discussing back and forth, everybody's plans, everybody's assumed roles. So, I'm not, I, I'm using this as a vehicle for something else, and I, and I hope that's fair, so that when it goes to a committee, I hope that that chair has the first meeting, says, how are we gonna get everybody in the same room? How we get all the counselors that want to show up, the administration, everybody, so we can have a unified conversation.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Z.
So, I, I do feel compelled to respond, uh, with all due respect to the parties. Number one is, what you just described was the ad hoc, and I can't put words in the mouth of the planning and development chair if it does go there, but I don't think he'd be excited about reconstituting the ad hoc. A lot of us put a lot of sweat and blood into that, including the people that you're mentioning, those from the boards and the commissions. So, we have an ad hoc plan, and as far as I'm concerned, that's the start line. That's not, it's, this isn't, we're not restarting the whole thing again. I, I can say personally, I, I can't do it again. I just can't. Um, and I, I think, uh, we need to move forward from that point, so if there are alterations that people want to the ad hoc, or that kind of discussion, but restarting the whole clock
but restarting the whole clock again, we will be here again in two years. That's the first response. Second one is, there's no drive to eliminate the NRA. There's a drive to get the waterfront park done. And, you know, there are lots of things we can control, and there are lots of things we can't control, and no one knows the complexities better and the different parties and the push and pull, and I think everybody is trying, and I respect that. But I think where the impasse is, is that there's a balancing that needs to be done of priorities, and each party is representing their own interests. And that's what the 11 of us get paid the big bucks for, is to balance city priorities, which is the hardest and most difficult part of this job. You know, you can't just say yes to everybody, and that's why it needs to come home to the city council and to the mayor, and we need to have that discussion here. And so, it's not an emotional response, honestly, with all due respect. This is just saying, look, we spent a lot of time on that. And by the way, all parties love some parts of the ad hoc and hate other parts as well. This is not a favoritism thing. No one's going to be patting me on the back, I can tell you that, if I also don't get thrown into the river. So, that's where we are, and I think, I will agree that it, hopefully, will restart the conversations with everybody, and we'll be able to move in a positive direction with it. But given the time I put in, I had to respond, at least directly, to some of the comments. So, anyways, my final thing is, it's a friendly amendment if it's committee of the whole and planning development, if that so pleases everybody, and we can move on with it. If you also want general government on there, so you do general government, planning development, and committee of the whole, that pretty much would get everybody. It's up to you.
Well, just for clarity's sake, we have an amendment under discussion, and that is to refer this matter to general government. So, if you want to make a subsequent amendment, I'd ask you to hold that until we dispose of the amendment that's before us.
I'll withdraw my amendment to general government.
Thank you. And a second is withdrawn.
And I would motion that also we add the committee of the whole.
Friendly.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah.
So, the motion is then for us that this matter be sent to a committee.
Planning and development.
Planning and development and committee of the whole.
Thank you.
A second on that if needed.
We have more seconds. We have seconds out the ears.
We've got 10s of seconds.
Further discussion.
Hold on, if I can get that correctly. So, we're now have on the floor, your motion to amend has been withdrawn. Is that a new motion to amend? Is that accepted by you as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
So, we have one motion on the floor, which is to move the matter to planning and development and committee of the whole, which if I read our new rules, means we need a two-thirds vote under 7B.
And that vote will be taken by roll call.
Okay. This is to move the matter as aforementioned. Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Counselor Ragman.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Matters moved to public, planning and development and committee of the whole.
I think that's the first time in 40 years I've heard something related to the NRA receive unanimous consent.
Don't get used to it.
Thank you, counselors. Ordinances, we have none tonight, so we'll move on to committee items. Budget and finance?
Motion to remove transfer number six. Health insurance, $8,550 to general travel training, $8,550.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Oh, let's just provoke. It's to take out of committee, right?
Yeah. No roll call necessary.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, counselor.
Motion to approve.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Tanta.
Yeah, we recommended, we voted on this three to nothing, three to zero in the budget and finance committee to approve this transfer. These funds ought to be used by a firefighter who's going to get advanced paramedical training. He would be the second firefighter to have advanced training. It's, I mean, my understanding, and I thank the chief for being here, is that it stands alone to have this training, whether or not we go to purchase an ambulance, but this would be very beneficial in moving toward, improving the quality of the staff, to moving toward having an ambulance. It's about a 12 to 14-month program, essentially the equivalent of a two-year degree. The firefighter is donating, doing it on his own time. He's not being compensated for his time. We're just paying the tuition. The city would just pay the tuition, and it's to the city's advantage to do it. The question was raised in committee, because this is a case where this is general training, the person could take it and leave. We're told that the individual is a lifelong resident of the city with deep roots. My understanding is that Kelly School is named after one of his ancestors, so those are deep, that qualifies, I think, for deep roots. And it's, you know, somewhat difficult to change from one department to another, and so he's committed to it. In committee, we asked a number of questions about the move to an ambulance. I think we're getting there, to having an ambulance, but we still have a little ways to go. So, it was three-nothing. Recommendation to approve.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion. I might ask, if you could hold for a counselor. Chief LaClara is here. Chief, is there anything you'd like to share with us, or are you here to answer questions? Because if you're here.
There's questions.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah, I voted for support, to support this in committee, because I think actually it's a pretty good deal for the city, and so for the $8,500 bucks, you get another person who's trained. There's some pairing that's necessary when responding, so that's helpful. I just did want to use this opportunity to ask, though, you know, it seems like we're moving towards the ambulance, which I know a lot of us have thought a lot about, and I would just ask if there's any way to involve the council earlier and maybe give us some good runway on getting some numbers and some financials and thinking about what the implications are, like, I mean, like a year. I mean, give us time to really, I know you've spent a lot of time, I'm looking at the chief, we spent a lot of time investigating it, but if it's becoming serious, and I believe it's in the CIP for next year to have the ambulance, I know I would benefit a lot from having time and maybe could even help add something to it. So, it would be appreciated if we could be considered maybe early on with some preliminary stuff and some thoughts. I know some counselors have questions, and will you really make money on it? Do you break even? What happens? And what are the benefits and the risks and all those things? So, thank you, and thanks to the chief for coming to our committee meeting as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you, counselor. Other comments? Questions? Speak now. Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call.
Motion approved, transfer six. Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Ragman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Are there any other committee items, budget and finance?
Yes, motion to remove order number 17, North Rail Trail gift acceptance of $3,500.
Second.
Is there a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, removing this from committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Discussion. Counselor Tanta.
Yeah, just very quickly, the Friends of Newburyport trees are donating this to the city. It will be located in the part of the north rail trail, in the vicinity of where it goes under the High Street Bridge. It's, in a sense, it's also a memorial to people who have donated trees to the city, and it will be a living memorial. The $3,500 is the, is the value placed on it by the artist, as well as all costs that will cover installation.
There's a three-zero vote in committee, except. I was just about to ask that. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Motion approved, order number 17. Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Ragman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Is there anything else out of budget and finance, Charlie?
That's it, Mr. President.
Anything from education? Would you like to add a report to your committee? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we met with our friends from the school committee on Monday, April 2. We had two items on our agenda. The first item was school gymnasium use policies, and the question was, well, how are the gymnasiums reserved and used by the public? The athletic director was nice enough to join us. We did learn that the school gyms are used by many groups throughout the city, not just the school, the schools, but all sorts of different groups. As you can imagine, during the winter, there's zero availability, very little availability to use the gyms. The athletic director is the administrator of this rental program for the whole city. He has a designated person at each school that does the coordination, and then he confirms reservations and sends out invoices to collect the fees. And what was very interesting to find out, that all fees go to the city and not the school department. And these fees are earmarked to, for upkeep for the gyms. So, something we learned there. I didn't realize that. The second, the second item we had was future capital project planning, and this came to us from Steve Berkholm from the school department. He actually reached out to me and asked if he could put this on our agenda to discuss this. So, he joined us, and he had said moving forward that he identified two problems that we have right now. The first is, is we need to communicate better in regards to capital projects. So, we have the laboratory spaces, a possible new labs at the high school. We also had, recently had the middle school elevator project. So, he felt that, he felt better communication would really, really help moving forward. The other thing that he mentioned, which was music to my ears, was getting better cost estimates. And we had, of course, the elevator sticks out, right? So, we had to do three transfers for the elevator, and, you know, we did have conversations in regards to getting bids before we approved money, so we know exactly where we are financially. This way here, we can do it all in one transfer. He also discussed getting more people involved earlier in the discussion of capital projects, specifically members of the school committee and the city council. So, if they have something on their mind, that might be years away, but getting us all involved with discussions of, you know, where we need to go, why we want to get there, and what's it going to take to fund it. It was a great discussion, it really was. And it was brought up in the discussion that Counselor Z had suggested that capital projects could be vetted by the school committee, and then recommended to the city council for funding. This idea seemed to gather consensus amongst our group. The one thing we did find from talking to the school committee in regards to these capital projects is, they really don't know too much about them, and they're as interested as we are to know more about the details. And though we do all the funding, they would like to be more engaged in the process. That was our meeting.
Very well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, counselor. General government, I'm going to cede the chair, or at least the opportunity to report to Counselor Vogel.
Thank you. Simply reporting out on the couple items that are in committee, actually just reporting out on the number, the 007-212. We met on the 28th of March. All the members of the committee were present, as well as the mayor, the ad hoc, and others present at the, were Counselors Z, Counselor Ann, Counselor Conn, and the administrative assistant, Paul O'Brien. So, we discussed the ordinance, to amend the Division VII, the city solicitor, and the decision was to leave it in committee. Take no action, or there is further action. Pending further action by the sponsor, we'll continue the conversation. The discussion was held referencing the two decisions, one from KP Law and one from Murphy Lemire and Murphy, and it was pointed out that these two decisions agree on the section 2-246, that would, if they were enacted, that would be contrary to the charter, and therefore ineffective, and they disagree on section 2-252 with KP Law indicating conflict and MLNM indicating no conflict. So, we discussed that. Interesting discussion. Further discussion was held on the idea of creating a separate budget line item for the council, when they, when we specifically request law options, law opinions, and it was interesting, because they, you know, we're not sure exactly how much money we spend when we request opinions from legal. So, that effort's being made to figure out how much we actually have spent on legal, as opposed to the rest of the administration, and the mayor is up for creating a line item so that we have our own line item without any consideration by the administration. So, we get to spend our own line item for legal. So, we'll take that up when we get those numbers. It was also pointed out by the mayor that the council's requests for opinion have never been denied, and, you know, so yet, in the effort of compromise, they suggested that the line item could be created. We held a discussion on the two conflicting decisions. Testimony from Counselor Connell was that perhaps the city solicitor being there at the first meeting may or may not be the best idea, so we're going to continue that. And then, what it came down to, we're going to wait for further action. We're waiting for Counselor Z, I believe, to have conference with the planning department to see when and how, what is best, and we'll take a backup in committee. And if I left anything out, feel free to add.
Counselor Z. Thank you, counselor.
No, it was a fair committee report. I just wanted to add, I actually went to the planning board to talk about the second portion, which is having the city solicitor. They work really hard. I addressed them. I think I started my comments at 11:00 PM. They were here last week, and I was here until about 11:45 PM. It was a really good discussion. I think this was maybe part of the same idea of having the appointments come into committee, is just to have that opportunity to talk to the boards and commissions and understand what they're going through. It was an interesting discussion. I think there was more consensus on Counselor President Connell's point of view, which is maybe a bit blunt to have them come in for the first meeting. We did talk about the thresholds and how those were kind of set, so that's still an ongoing discussion. But I will say, the most interesting part is, what there was nearly 100% consensus of was, almost everybody on the planning board felt that having a more local attorney, possibly even an in-house attorney, would be helpful. Somebody who's deeply knowledgeable about Newburyport, knows, understands the context and the history, could be valuable. And several of the members of the planning board fortunately have professional experience and deal with this, in fact, in some ways every day, and said that that's been an important thing, that sometimes, you know, the planning department's here, and the third door down is the city solicitor or an attorney that works. So, it was a very fruitful discussion on that respect. As I told them, I did fill them in on kind of where we were, and then we said, okay, and we said, okay, if they need an attorney, which attorney will they get? Will they get the city council's attorney, or will they get the administration's? So, there are still things to be worked out, but I'm glad that we're addressing it. It's something that's important to me, and I know to other counselors as well. So, ongoing, and I'd like to keep the discussion going. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. I think we have a good composite view of what took place. Any other comments, counselor? Junta was also there. Is there anything you'd like to add, counselor?
Sure, I'll speak for two seconds. I was one that was arguing for, for the order, and I was very happy to hear the mayor say that she would create a line item for us so we could have her own attorney, and that made me very happy. So, hopefully, we'll continue to move forward. That was a nice compromise in a long discussion, so that was appreciated.
Thank you, counselor. Thank you for your reporting on that one. We're up to license and permits. I don't see anything in committee.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Neighborhood City Services?
Counselor Vogel.
Thank you, counselor. Planning and Development.
Motion to remove Communication 122 Mobility Application Small Soil Utility Petition.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Is there a motion?
Motion received and filed.
Second.
Moved and seconded, received and filed. Discussion. Counselor Ragman.
This matter is going to be retained in Public Utilities. We don't need to have it in this committee.
Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
To remove, received and filed Communication 122 from Planning and Development. Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Ragman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Are there any other things? Counselor?
Motion to remove ordinance four, amendments to zoning map. Second.
Moved and seconded. Remove this from committee. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Done. Second. Motion received and filed. Seconded. Discussion. Counselor Ragman?
Same thing.
None?
Yes, let's go.
No one wishes to discuss this? All right, we'll take a roll call, please.
So, motion received and filed, order number eight, grant of location. Counselor Tanta.
Yes.
Counselor Vogel.
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Devlin.
Yes.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Ragman.
Yes.
Counselor Junta.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Counselor Shan.
Yes.
Counselor Conn.
Yes.
Anything else, counselor?
Motion to remove ordinance four, amendments to zoning map. Second.
Moved and seconded. Remove this from committee. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion received and filed.
Motion received and filed. It's your second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Counselor Ragman.
Yes, I sponsored this back in January in response to Chamber of Commerce comments. The issue is now moot. The zoning advisory committee is continuing work on zoning, so we don't need this.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Received and filed Order Number 4, Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Motion to remove Appointment 21 Donald B. Walters.
Moved and seconded, to move an appointment 21 from committee. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out?
Motion approved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Counselor?
The committee had a meeting, and it was actually a public hearing. Mr. Walters appeared and answered questions. No other members of the public came. We unanimously recommended his reappointment.
Further discussion? Roll call.
This is to approve Appointment Number 21. Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
At the same meeting where we discussed the reappointment of Mr. Walters, we discussed this easement, and we had Andy Port, the planning director, on the phone. We don't have any substantive changes. There are only typos, which I will hand to the clerk and also provide to Andy Port. For example, more specific references to the date when deeds were recorded. Just to explain to the public what this is, the Evergreen Commons project, now known as Port Place, is a 38-lot subdivision at the former Evergreen Golf Course. One of the conditions of approval is that the city of Newburyport have access to monitoring wells for groundwater, and we, of course, need to have a durable property right in order to do that through the life of the project. So this instrument is an easement that will go on record, making clear that the city has the right to pass over all, all portions of the project to get to the 19 acres of open space where the wells are. One clarification we had with Director Port is that as private lots are built, we lose the right to cross those private lots. We don't interfere with homeowners, and we use the streets instead. And we unanimously recommended approval.
Thank you. Counselor Zied?
I just have a couple of questions about this. One is, I'll ask all three, and then if anybody on the committee could help, but one is, is there any use for this land in terms of public recreation, or is it simply there for the use to, I mean, obviously, monitoring the wells is quite important, but is there any access to it for the public? I don't know, are there trails or anything like that? That's question one. Question two is, I'm just curious about what I only have heard about anecdotally about this private street-public street thing. So it's my understanding that oftentimes, these streets start off as private streets, and then they later become accepted by the city. Does recording or accepting this instrument, you know, lead us down that path if we want it, if we want it to be a public street, or if we don't want it to be a public street? And the last one is, I don't know if this is a concern really, or in terms of the cost of insurance, but it says we have to provide them with insurance that we're liable, or our insurer is liable if anybody gets hurt on it. Is that a nominal cost, or we just call Maya and just say, hey, we have another property, and they say, okay, and it's essentially a non-issue cost-wise? The reason I ask is, you know, I did look back at the Muni Code, just trying to understand maybe why people have OSRDs, because it's a big trade. You allow a subdivision that you otherwise wouldn't allow in trade for this OSRD, so I just want to understand what the value is, maybe to inform future decisions.
Counselor Agarman?
Would you like to respond? I could respond to three questions. So just a fast one. First, on recreational use, we asked the same question of Andy Port. There will be a separate instrument recorded that gives, that preserves the right of the public to use the 19 acres for recreation. So this document doesn't do that. Andy Port represented to us that it would be forthcoming, and that is a requirement of the special permit, that we don't have it yet. Second, on the private streets-public streets, my understanding is, the special permit specifically provides that the streets will be private, meaning that they are privately maintained, but they are subject to a public access easement, so any member of the public will be able to use those streets. That's exceedingly common throughout the United States now, because as local government is starved of revenue, really can't afford to take care of any more streets. So that's normal. And this instrument wouldn't prejudice that in any way. And, but, you know, we also can't necessarily tie the hands of future city councils, so 20 years from now, if the city council in its wisdom wants to accept it into the system and take on the cost, snow plowing, God bless them. And then, third, insurance. Yeah, that's also normal, that when you, when you give an easement to someone, that you basically say, well, you have to have insurance in case something goes wrong. We actually did discuss the amount, which is $1 million for bodily injury, and that's actually lower than I'm used to seeing, so it's not really a big cost.
So just one question in response. So I know, I know this was late filed last time, so is there any reason we should do this tonight and not get the whole package together with the other pieces? So, because, I mean, just from previous experience, it's nice when everything comes in together. We have all of it at once. Is there a pressing timeline?
Fair question. Counselor Agarman?
No, it's a fair question. We asked the same thing, you know, obviously, given history in Newburyport, we wanted to make sure that, you know, we're getting what they're required to do.
Right.
And the timing of this is apparently important. This does need to get on record soon, for, I can't remember the reason now, and Andy Port's not here, but, but they will not be able to sell the final lots. You know, they, what happened is, we won't, I was told, we won't allow them to sell, you know, the 31st through 38th lots until everything is in. I don't have the details on exactly the rules. I haven't reviewed them. I hope some lawyer is looking at them to make sure that they're up to snuff, but yes, you are anticipating the right issue. Sometimes, these infrastructure requirements and easements don't get done. The developer sells off all the lots, and then you never hear from them again. So we did anticipate this. I think that our committee was comfortable releasing this particular easement, which actually benefits the city as well. And then, you know, we're still going to watch this like a hawk going forward.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. President, I've got to prove is amended. Who was the second on that?
I think I did.
Thank you. So Order 19, approve as amended.
Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Last thing is an announcement. We're going into the school holiday week, so the plan is, we've scheduled a hearing for Wednesday, April 11th, that's two, two days from now, at 6:30 p.m., on the reappointment of Bob Ullig to the NRA. The other appointment of David St. Seer is not going to go on that night. He could not attend. He hasn't confirmed when he's available, but again, in the discussions with the mayor and others on when to deal with the NRA dissolution, we penciled in Wednesday, the 25th. Wednesday, the 25th. Now that it's committee of the whole, you know, we can talk about it after the meeting and firm up our schedules, but that's the intention, is to take a break and get back together two weeks later.
Thank you, Counselor.
That's it.
That's it. Public safety.
Yes. Motion to remove Communication 23 from 3/26/2018, Cultural Survival Bazaar.
Is it moved and seconded? Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor who are removing this from committee, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded, approved. Discussion?
Yes, we had a committee meeting today at 6 o'clock, and present was Counselor Jinta and myself. Jessica, the event organizer, came in. I called her Jamie a couple of times, but bless her heart, she forgave me for it. But Jessica was saying that this is Cultural Survival Bazaar, monies go to indigenous, there we go, people, I choked on that word, indigenous peoples, that's what the artwork is that's being sold, and the booths have, all, most of the artists are of indigenous descent, or they represent the indigenous artists. There's, I just want to keep on saying the word.
You're all in now.
She said this is, they usually do these events out of Boston. She thinks that before her time, they did one in Newburyport. She's pretty sure they did, so it's been here once before. Very interesting, they do it around other parts of the country. This is not, I'm pretty sure it was a Piggly Wiggly, but I saw a display of indigenous art there, and saw a sign that said the proceeds went to the artists themselves. So there's 30 booths, there's three Porter Johns, the events on July 21st and 22nd. They have the sign-offs from everybody, including the Parks Department. They have, they have their commitment for assurance, but a letter saying that the actual binder will be issued, and that's one of the conditions of our approval, to give you a preview of coming attractions. They've provided a plan. They spoke to the police, and they didn't have any, they got the sign-off, and they didn't have any additional requirements. It's a nonprofit group that was started in 1972 to help indigenous peoples, as I said, and one other condition we put, oh, oh, sound. There won't be any live music, it'll be 10 a.m. to 5 p.m. It's ambient noise, because they don't want, you know, they want the artists to be able to converse. She also doesn't think this is like any products that any of the brick and mortar stores have down there, but we have asked her to go speak to them and let them know that she will be on site, and to give them her telephone number, which she's agreed to do, and then she'll report back to the clerk. So those were the two conditions, that she go do that, that she is going to be on site, and she was already going to be on site, and that they get the final insurance binder to the clerk. So this was, came out of committee, 2 to nothing, to approve.
Thank you, Counselor. Mr. Clerk?
Counselor, just for clarification, so the second condition is, there's no sound before 10 or after 5 p.m.?
Correct.
And during that period, they can have amplified sound or no amplified sound? It says amplified.
It was amplified sound, but it was recorded.
Okay. So no live music?
Right.
No live?
Further discussion? Counselor Earl's?
I'm reading correctly, there's no food being served.
No. Hots and crafts.
Too bad.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor, we'll take a roll call.
A roll call is subject to those two conditions. Motion for approval on Communication 23. Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Many recommendations prevails.
Motion to remove Communication 24 dated 3/26/2018 Flag Day 5K.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Devlin?
This is the fifth time this event has been before the Public Safety Committee and the city council. Counselor Jinta tested that they hadn't had any problems. I was on the license commission when they first started this. We didn't have any problems. I run in this every year with my buddy Sully and a couple of other cops, and this is a great event. It is, I'm sure everybody knows, but it's to raise funds for the Wounded Warriors Project in memory of Derek Hines, who's a native son who passed away, was killed in action in Afghanistan. If you've ever been to the event, it's very moving. It's very well-attended. I don't think there's any crime happening anywhere near there, because every cop in the, in New England is there and running, so, so no complaints. They have all their sign-offs, they have the plans, the same that's being run before, and I think the city's in very good hands, and it's a great, great event.
Thank you, Counselor. I second what you just said. Great event. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Motion approved Communication 24. Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Any recommendation prevails?
Motion to remove Communication 24 dated 3/26/2018 Flag Day 5K.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Counselor Devlin?
This is the fifth time this event has been before the Public Safety Committee and the city council. Counselor Jinta tested that they hadn't had any problems. I was on the license commission when they first started this. We didn't have any problems. I run in this every year with my buddy Sully and a couple of other cops, and this is a great event. It is, I'm sure everybody knows, but it's to raise funds for the Wounded Warriors Project in memory of Derek Hines, who's a native son who passed away, was, was killed in action in Afghanistan. If you've ever been to the event, it's very moving. It's very well-attended. I don't think there's any crime happening anywhere near there, because every cop in the, in New England is there and running, so, so no complaints. They have all their sign-offs, they have the plans, the same that's being run before, and I think the city's in very good hands, and it's a great, great event.
Thank you, Counselor. I second what you just said. Great event. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call, please.
Motion approved Communication 24. Counselor Tanta?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zied?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earl's?
Yes.
Counselor Agarman?
Yes.
Counselor Jinta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Anything else from public safety?
of noise and that's where a lot of the decibel readings come from and the language come from. They also, the staff submitted language as well. So this is written in the language of the people who have to enforce this. Just one, this came out of committee with a recommendation for approval, two to zero, but with an amendment on page two of three. Article 8-101-NOISE-A should read, "No unnecessary emissions of noise." And then in the last line, it should read, "Permit unnecessary emissions of noise from said source of sound," period. The clerk has these changes. It just was a scrivener's error in the way the language was presented. And I will let Counselor Junta or Igerman add anything to the origin.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Agaman?
Yeah, just a little bit more color. Yeah, in certain wards, especially downtown, and also I know in Ward 5 in particular, with connection with port rehabilitation, we've had a lot of noise problems. So the state rules, of course, are subject to change, but they are the ones that staff, particularly the Health Inspector Frank Giaccoloni and Peter Burnett and the other building inspector are familiar with. So we adhere to them very closely. And I just want to draw your attention to the very last paragraph about enforcement, who's going to enforce this thing, is we want to make it possible for many people so that they don't all have to point fingers at each other and then they can take action and not wait on each other. So the provisions of this section shall be enforced by the Police Department or the Department of Health. So either the Police Department or Frank Giaccoloni and his staff can always enforce. And then if it's in connection with state building code, the Building Commissioner. So say there's a contractor who's violating the noise ordinance, our building inspector, Peter Burnett, can take action directly. And then similarly, the zoning administrator, Jennifer Blanchett, could do it for anything in connection with zoning. So that's, that was the concept. And if there are any questions, you can answer them, but that ought to cover it.
Counselor Earls?
Just a small clarification. You, in committee, took out the words "that may cause noise" in A, as you discussed. You go down to I and it ends, "sounds that cause noise." So why is that still there? But on the first paragraph, I don't see, I don't see the differentiation. If that makes any sense.
Well, if I could help. Yeah, sorry. So under the state law, which is what we're copying, if you go down to page three, the first paragraph in page three, basically what the state law says is, you can, you can make sound, but you can't make noise. Noise is, so they define noise as what's banned. That's the concept.
Counselor Zede?
Actually, that kind of dovetails with my question. So my question's on page three of three, the very top full paragraph, Section B, noise defined.
Yeah.
So I was kind of a little bit unsure of the first sentence. It says, "Noise shall mean a sound of sufficient intensity to cause a nuisance or to be injurious" or, you know, and blah, blah, blah. But then it says, "It'd only be illegal if it's more than 10 decibels." So the reason I'm questioning this is, this doesn't replace being neighborly, right? That's the problem. It's hard to write a law to be neighborly, but the nuisance is kind of a tough one. So, but the overriding part is the 10 decibels, correct? That's the actual objective measure that one would use, although I don't know if we have any sound measuring equipment, but let's just say we do. It's the 10 decibels over the ambient noise that really makes it illegal. Do I have that correct? Am I interpreting? So somebody saying that noise is a nuisance doesn't mean it's illegal. It's the 10 decibels, it's the objective measure.
Counselor Agaman?
So first of all, nuisance is still a, you know, it's a common law cause of action. So anybody, you can always sue somebody on a private nuisance. You don't need to look to statute at all or ordinance or anything. But yes, you are correct. Well, you're half-right. So there's two ways it could constitute unlawful. One is 10 decibels above ambient or produces a pure tone condition when any octave band center frequency sound pressure level exceeds the two adjacent center frequency sound pressure levels by 3 decibels or more. Ah, so there. I don't have any idea what that second one means, but it sounds great. So, okay, thank you. We're covered.
I'm tempted. Counselor Junta?
So, you know, again, to get back to the origin of this is, you know, commercial building abutting on R1 residential neighborhood, delivery trucks coming in at 5:00 in the morning, dumpsters being dumped, you know?
Lifted.
Bang, bang, bang. You guys, this is, this is what this is to regulate. Construction sites, construction guy showing up at 6:00 in the morning, compressor starts up, starting with an E L gun. When I called the zoning enforcement officer to say, you know, I have a problem at a construction site, I have neighbors that are upset, the word I got back was, is I don't really have the tools I need to handle the issue. These are the tools and we really do need them. We did try to follow state laws, you know, right down the line on this. And I don't think we have a lot of these problems, but I think when we do have them, currently we don't have the tools to deal with them appropriately. So I have one neighbor that keeps a logbook that's got 470 violations, but never find. So here we are.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion? Roll call.
First reading, approval, ordinance number two on noise. Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Anything else from public safety?
Yes. Motion to remove Order 14 from 3/12/2018, crosswalks on Rossin Ave and Turkey Hill Road.
Moved and seconded by Counselor Zede. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor?
All right. This is the one that was sponsored by Counselor Tantar and Counselor Junta. It's for two crosswalks in two different wards. Number one, Rossin Hill Ave is Counselor Tantar's ward. They were looking for, a lot of kids cross this road to the, go to the middle school in particular. There's a lot of traffic on it from the, you know, traffic to the hospital. Counselor Tantar asked the police to put up a sign board to measure traffic. There was lots of traffic, not necessarily speeding. He also spoke to Wayne Emerald at DPS who thought a crosswalk was warranted there. They need to add a little piece of sidewalk there for the crosswalk to have something to connect to. They have the funds and some leftover drainage funds, they think. And so they have the funds and this is a, a place that's warranted for it. Number two, across on Turkey Hill Road, very similar, there's a lot of, there's bus stops there and there was actually no stop sign originally at Bartlett Drive. Now there is. DPS has also okayed this. It's in the budget. They think it's going to happen in July. Came out of committee, two to nothing.
Counselor Tantar?
There's a scrivener's error here. It's Rossin Hill Avenue. It should read Rossin because Rossin does not intersect Highland.
Rossin Ave.
Which is the right one?
Not Rossin Hill. Not Rossin Hill.
Move the hill. The hill.
Second.
I'm going to die in that hill. Is that friendly?
Need for a second on that. It says, it's a scrivener's error. I'm sure the clerk has made note.
We're taking a hill off of a street.
Further discussion? Good catch.
I am the one that called it Turkey Hill Street by mistake.
Hmm. And a lifelong resident.
So goes the native card.
Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Motion to approve Order 14, Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Devlin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Junta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Any further matters in public safety?
Nothing else coming out, but I'll just update the council on Newburyport Half Marathon. We had the organizer come in and he's going to look into relieving some of the stress on parking in Ward 3. When they, he has events starting at Cashman. He's thinking about, in his conversation with Counselor Shan, had suggested starting out in the industrial park elsewhere where there's ample parking and he's going to look into that. We also discussed other, you know, things. We used him sort of as a way, way of discussing other large events because over the years, he's been very forthright and cooperative. So, and I thought he was very helpful in some of the things he talked about. There were some complaints about people along routes not, who are on dead ends, not being able to get out. And, you know, he, he actually goes around his whole route and has somebody paper the route and give announcements about five to seven days beforehand. So thought maybe he could do it on dead end streets, look at a map. So it was a good discussion. We also met on the floating homes, households and related marinas, which you all caught the end of that very long socially initial organizational meeting. We will have another meeting. I'm going to try to make sure that all the players are there and I'll let them keep on, you know, saying their piece at each one, but look forward to Counsel O'Brien coming back and giving his input and we're going to call in various stakeholders also to see, get some input on this from them as well. And that's it from public safety.
Thank you, Counselor. Public Utilities. Counselor Zede?
I'll give my update first. Really briefly, you know, mobility was received and filed. It is being actively worked on. Counselor Khan was good to do some research for us and found some other communities doing some things. So that's currently with the city solicitor, awaiting a result. So it just wanted to let you know, it's not gone from Public Utilities. That's one. Two is, this is kind of fresh, but just hearing the mayor's update, I think probably it would be a good time for Public Utilities to meet with the Water and Sewer Commission and maybe do some fact-finding on this MS4 thing as, as an envoy for all of us so we can bring you back some information. I don't honestly know very much about it, other than it's been kicked down the road for every year I've been on the council. So with that, motion to remove Order Number 18, Frank DeLucia and Son, licensed contractor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. It's out?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, Counselor Zede?
Yep, so this came in at our last meeting. This came in by way of DPS. I did speak with Wayne and, you know, the only thing that was sort of remiss on the